Close enough, so when you speak.
Got it.
Before you get started, I want to let you know that we're piloting our online streaming. So we're on YouTube and we'll be on Facebook too.
Oh.
We're giving our citizens more opportunities to criticize.
What's that? What's that? Your brilliant idea?
Okay, so I'll give you a background. Our granite is this terrible closed captioning.
Yes.
So this is better.
It was about time.
Oh my gosh. That's just my favorite, you know. Yeah, yeah.
Hey, good evening. This is a work session with Greenbelt City Council. My name is Emmett Jordan. I serve as mayor. And I'm joined by my colleagues here at the table.
Kristen Weaver, Mayor Pro Tem.
Counselor.
Silky Pope, City Council.
Jenny Pompey, City Council.
Roddy Roberts, City Council.
Danielle McKinney, City Council.
Yeah, you know, our work sessions are open to the public except for executive sessions as authorized by state law. So the residents and others can observe council deliberations. We strive to provide reasonable opportunities for the public to voice opinions on matters being considered. And we'll pause periodically for public comment during these times. If you wish to address counsel or ask a question, if you're in the room, raise your hand.
Recording in progress.
All right, all right. Okay, so here we are. We're in, we're just about in the work session. I was just saying that our work sessions and meetings are always open to the public, except for executive sessions as authorized by state law. So residents can observe and we're going to pause periodically to take questions from the public. If you're in the room and you raise your hand after being recognized, go to the podium. Please state your name and where you live in Greenbelt. We need that for the minutes. If you are on Zoom, you can use the Q and A tab at the bottom of the screen. And raise your virtual hand. Or you can also simply raise your virtual hand and then we'll recognize you. And if you're on cable TV, you can send an email to questions@greenbeltmd.gov. Please limit your remarks, three or five minutes, and speak on one topic related to the question or consideration. We ask, as always, that you avoid questioning the motives of others and in general, that you're civil in your remarks. We're all neighbors here anyway. So tonight, we're actually meeting with our good friends, our neighbors at Luminous Healthcare Doctors Hospital. But before I go there, I need to ask, are there any information items? You've got two. And I've got, I've got a couple of items. Mr. Samerone, do you have any information items for the end of the meeting? Okay. So it's been about a year or so since the last time we spoke. And as I said, you know, your neighbors, your friends, so many of our residents work at the hospital. And it's the first choice. If something happens to me, I'm going straight to doctors. So if you could each introduce yourselves, that would be great.
Yes. So good evening, Mayor Jordan and City Council members and everyone else who has joined in the room remotely. I'm Deneen Richmond. I'm the president at Luminous Health Doctors Community Medical Center. I have been in this role as the president since the fall of 2020. So yes, I have the distinction of being a pandemic president. We won't get into that today. And thank goodness, conditions are a lot better than when they were a couple of years ago. Also share that I'm a lifelong Prince Georgian and a graduate of Eleanor Roosevelt Science and Technology Program. So this area and this, the county is not new to me and really glad to be here in this capacity and share some updates with you tonight. I have two of my colleagues with me tonight as well, and I'll just ask them to introduce themselves.
So Luke Clock, Director of Capital Projects for Luminous Health.
And Davion Percy, Vice President of Community Relations and Public Policy for Luminous Health.
Thank you so much. And I want to introduce our city manager, Josue Samerone.
Josue Samerone, City Manager, welcome. And I'm here joined by Terry. Terry, want to introduce yourself?
Terry Ruby, Director of Planning and Community Development.
Okay. Well, now that we've gotten the formalities out of the way, let's dive right in. There's a lot of great things, from what I understand, going on at Doctors Hospital, just in terms of meeting the needs of Prince George's County, expanding, refining the services. And it's a challenging time in healthcare where government, state regulation determines what you can do and what you can't do. And at the same time, great needs in Prince George's County. So can you kind of give us a quick summary of recent developments? And I know you have a PowerPoint and some specific information you want to share with us.
Sure. So I'll start off with just kind of a broad and kind of general overview. So for those who may not be familiar, Doctors has actually been in this community for almost 50 years. We'll be celebrating our 50-year anniversary in 2025. However, Doctors has only become part of Luminous Health in July of 2019. So prior to that, Doctors was one of the few remaining independent hospitals, not just here in Prince George's County or in Maryland, but in the country. Many, many hospitals have now joined health systems just for clinical and financial reasons. The hospital was having some financial difficulties and thus they issued an RFP looking for a partner. What was then known as Anarondo Medical Center or Anarondo Health System was one of the organizations that responded to that RFP and ultimately was successfully selected as the partner to take over the operations of Doctors. Luminous Health is our system name. So if you think about other systems, University of Maryland Medical System, Luminous Health is our system name. And we consist of Doctors Community Medical Center, as you know, right here in Lanham. Our other acute care hospital is Anarondo Medical Center in Annapolis. We also have two behavior health hospitals or inpatient psychiatric centers. The Lanham Campus Behavior Health Center just opened about a year ago. And that's a 16-bed inpatient adult psychiatric facility, very, very much needed in the county as well. And then we have our McNew Family Medical Center, which is our inpatient medical facility in Annapolis and about 100 freestanding sites all throughout Anarondo County, Prince George's County, and some of the surrounding districts. And very proud to share that we opened our most, our newest ambulatory site. It's a GYN practice, gynecological practice for women. I'll try not to use any healthcare speak and just call me on it if I do for women's health issues. And that is right in Greenbelt, in the Greenway Shopping Center area. So we are very much committed to this community. We've been working very closely with stakeholders such as yourself, state officials, our county officials, and really making sure that we understand what the needs are and what the gaps are in Prince George's County and in this northern part of Prince George's County specifically. And we've been very diligent about aligning our strategic plans with meeting many of the unmet needs here in the county and addressing disparities, access, clinical excellence, and just making sure that we can continue to be a provider of choice for those that live in Greenbelt and surrounding areas, particularly in northern Prince George's County. And our service area reach does go broader than that, but that's clearly our primary service area. So tonight, if it's okay, what we wanted to share, and we did share a PowerPoint. And we don't, we can kind of go through it, whatever, however it works best. And Mayor, I'll take our cues from you. But we wanted to talk with you tonight about what our plans are regarding expanding and modernizing care at Doctors, at our Lanham Campus and the surrounding area. And then also specifically address some questions that I know were, have come up in the past, specific to some of the planning aspects, the building campus, development and infrastructure, and how we are, want to make sure that we are doing everything humanly possible to minimize disruption while continuing to advance healthcare here in the county.
Sounds like a plan to me.
Okay.
Are there any initial questions about what's been said before we go into the PowerPoint? Okay, well, let's dive right in.
Okay, all right. Well, we can, I guess somebody behind me or around somewhere in the room is controlling the PowerPoint. So we can start with this slide, our vision. You know, so at Luminous Health, you know, our mission is really around to enhance the care of the people in the communities we serve. And so we talk about our vision for the county is really similar, I've kind of covered this a little bit already. It's really to become and continue to be that provider of choice here in the county and to expand our services to meet where we know there are unmet needs. We are a comprehensive community hospital. However, there are some services that we had not previously offered. And then there are additional services that the county and others have identified as great needs. So as I mentioned, we just a year ago expanded into behavior healthcare in addition to having the 16-bed adult inpatient psychiatric unit that accepts voluntary and involuntary patients or people who we need that level of care from throughout the county and beyond. We also have a full continuum of ambulatory behavior health services that are offered in that same building. It's a two-story building. We repurpose what some of you who may have lived in the community for years may have known as the former McNoya Gardens Nursing Home. So that is now our Behavior Health Pavilion. And on the ambulatory side, which is the first floor, we offer everything from walk-in, no appointment needed, urgent behavior healthcare. So think about, all of us are, I'm sure, very familiar with going to an urgent care center for medical needs. But there hadn't been anything that existed like that for behavior health needs. And we wanted to make sure that we could provide services to people and get them into the right treatment option before they were at a crisis level of care. We offer everything from that walk-in urgent care all the way up through a partial hospitalization program. So we have outpatient mental health therapy, intensive outpatient therapy. And we are currently in discussions with the state and the county and hope to soon have our eight-bed substance use residential crisis beds open as well. So it's a very comprehensive services that we offer for behavior health. And we coordinate with all of the community-based providers because our goal is to be able to have, be a source for people to be able to refer people in when they need higher levels of care than what they may be able to receive on a true outpatient basis. But then we also want to de-escalate and get people back integrated into the community. So we work very closely with the county and private community-based providers. Most recently, and we can cover the slide that you have here, we've been really looking at what some of those additional needs are, particularly in northern Prince George's County. And in a couple of minutes, I'm going to invite my colleague Davion to kind of share some of the work that we've been doing and some of the information that's coming out from the state and the county. But we really have kind of looked at our expansion or in three different ways, as you see here. One is in infrastructure redesign. So that campus was built almost 50 years ago. There's some quirkiness, I'll just use that word, about how the campus is built. So for example, it's not common that you would find a loading dock on the front of the campus. But that's the way it was built 50 years ago. None of us were a part of that, so we can't speak to the why. But we recognize that that's something that for more optimal delivery of care and traffic flow and other things that we want to make some revisions to. We also right now are kind of confined to a kind of a one-way-in, one-way-out loop road, as I like to refer to it. So that's another area where we want to really just expand access on the campus, make sure that there aren't bottlenecks, particularly as we're offering different services. So that requires, and my colleague here, Luke, will get into the nitty-gritty details. But that requires moving some roadways, utilities. We're maxing out on parking. So we want to put parking facilities, et cetera, so that people can very easily access and get to the services that we're offering. We also want to expand the type of services that we're offering. So I've mentioned behavior health is something that we just added over the last year. From the very beginning, actually, this was a part of Anarondo's proposal to Doctors at the time, was recognizing that it's one of the very few hospitals in the state that don't offer maternity services. And so many people like me who lived here in the county, I have two adult kids and they wouldn't like me calling them kids, but never mind. Adult, I don't know, children, whatever they are. And I lived in the county, received my prenatal care in the county, but with both of them was, they had to deliver in DC-based hospitals. And that's not uncommon. In fact, we know that almost eight out of 10 people, even today, eight out of 10 moms leave the county to deliver their babies. And we believe women should have access to deliver their babies close to home. So we have a certificate of need pending before the Maryland Healthcare Commission. Maryland is a certificate of need state, which means we have to receive state approval whenever we want to add any type of comprehensive services. Adding these services to our campus will actually require us building a, basically adding on to the hospital and building a pavilion or structure that will be connected in with the hospital. And two of those floors will be dedicated to the services for women in the labor and delivery period, as well as that postpartum period. And we also are using this as an opportunity to modernize some other aspects of our campus. And so that's part of that building renovation piece of moving our surgical suites, expanding things like our food nutrition area, lab and pharmacy, and all of those things that we want to make sure that we're continuing to meet industry standards. I'm sorry, Mayor, it looks like you had a question.
Mr. Gordon, you had a question about maternal care, OB-GYN services?
No, it's about, no, it's about just services in general. I can, I can wait until you start recognizing. I can go a little further in.
Okay. I'll just take my cues from, from all of you and just get my attention if I miss something here. So we can go to the next slide that I think just really summarizes our goals. And I believe I've covered all of these already, except for the last one that I'll speak on very briefly. But again, our goals with this most recent campus initiative is to expand and offer maternity services. As I've talked about, the roads and utilities and other structures to improve the accessibility of the campus, to modernize our surgical services. That is another area where we've been actively recruiting and growing some of our services. So we want to make sure that we have state-of-the-art operating rooms and enough of the right type of services. You know, there's robotic surgeries and other types of things that we offer today and want to make sure that we can offer them in the best environment. Updating the almost 50-year-old building, as I mentioned. And then the other thing that we've been very focused on is also with any project that we do, not just capital projects, but even our operating projects, is really, we recognize that we are a major employer. And we have a focus on increasing our business with diverse suppliers. When we refer to diverse suppliers, we're talking about minority business enterprises or MBEs, veteran-owned businesses, women-owned businesses, et cetera. We use the federal government definition of diverse employers. And this is a part of Luminous Health's greater initiative around what we refer to as our JDI, which stands for Justice, Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion. And we really rejuvenated our efforts around this in 2020 when we formed a governance-led, we refer to it as our heart force, which stands for Health Equity and Anti-Racism Task Force. And we developed 10 recommendations, everything around the diversity of our workforce, to offering culturally competent care, to really providing and pursuing these opportunities to increase our spend with diverse suppliers. So that is a big focus, particularly when we're talking about capital projects, because there's, you know, lots and lots of opportunities for us to interact with diverse suppliers when we're doing these types of buildings.
So that's interesting. We're working with a Jedi consultant right now, kind of looking internally at our workforce, but also engaging our residents, looking at the suppliers and just making sure that we're doing the best that we can.
Yes. And our board, I guess, I think it was last March, if I'm not mistaken. Actually, we, our governance board adopted a revised kind of supplier or purchaser policy to just demonstrate, even at the governance level, their commitment to what we're doing. And we have a number of provisions in that that include things like anytime we have, we're contracting with a new and a new, initiating a new contract or renewing existing contracts, one of our requirements is that we have at least one qualified diverse vendor that's part of the consideration pool. But we have a number of provisions and would be happy at a different time to share more of that. And Luke is very much involved in that from the capital project side. And our colleague Judy Smith, who's our VP of Supply Chain, is involved in that from the supply chain side. But at this point, I would like to turn it over to my colleague Davion to, before we get into the detailed recommendations, to just share a little bit of what we are, how we're connecting in and how this aligns with other work that's happening at the county as well as the state level.
Yeah, thank you very much, Deneen, and good evening again, everyone. Great to see you all. Deneen mentioned that statistic that is, a statistic that we refer to almost every day when we're talking about healthcare in Prince George's County, particularly in maternity care, that 80% of mothers have to leave this county to have their children. Obviously, this is something that we're trying to address. That statistic comes from our Community Health Needs Assessment, which was done. But also recently, the county, the county executive contracted a group to do a report on the, a health assessment on Prince George's County. And it identified several needs in terms of social determinants of health, the lack of primary care, the lack of certain specialties, including OB-GYN, gynecological services, which that report identified a lot of what we already, what we already knew. But we are really appreciative of the county executive commissioning that report because now we have an independent body, not paid by the healthcare industry or the pharmaceutical industry or any of those that says, you know, these are some important needs. And what we learned within the last month and a half is that a lot of what's identified in that report lines up with what we want to do right here in Prince George's County. So we are working very closely with the county executive, the county council, and the state to get funding for different projects, particularly our acute care pavilion at Women's Health Hub, which is a number-one priority for us, and to address other needs as well. So you'll be hearing more from us about what that looks like. We'll be reaching out to you, much like we've reached out to the county executive and the council for support. Because what's important is that we want to show a unified front. We want to show that when we go to the state and our federal partners, that not only is the county executive on board, the county council is on board, but our municipal partners that need our services, whose constituents need our services, supports us as well. So, you know, we're not asking for funding, that's tight for everyone, but we're asking for support for our funding priorities, which will be leaning heavily on the county, state, and federal government to help close some of those gaps in funding so that we can bring quality care to Prince George. Prince George. Covered it all so far?
So I think at this point, and this is the right slide that we're on right now. And I think, Luke, you're going to kind of walk us through some of the details of how, the feedback that we previously received from you and other Greenbelt constituents and nearby neighbors and how we are responding to that and have incorporated that feedback into our ongoing capital plans.
Thank you, Deneen. Yeah, so my journey here has started about two and a half years ago when we met to talk about the special exception that our property sits within. And in doing so, working with Terry, several others, and yourselves to create support for the, for the project. So within that, a letter was written in support, but it had some conditions on it. Those conditions are outlined in this presentation. And I just wanted to take time to go through them, to tell you guys the progress we're doing or making with each one of those conditions and answer any questions you guys have with those.
Okay.
There are a lot of, a lot of conditions around sustainability, EV charging, those kind of things. So just going down through them, electric vehicle chargers. Everybody knows that's, you know, the way that the things are moving. So this project is, we have targeted LEED Silver certification for the project. So within that also has a requirement for EV charging. So the requirements through some of the codes right now are pretty low. So we've gone above those standards and we're going to meet LEED, we're targeting LEED Silver. So we're going to use that. And we're using it as one of the credits through LEED is through our EV charging. So we're looking at how to distribute those, that patients, visitors, staff all have access to. And it's not specific to one group, and it's distributed throughout our campus appropriately. Comes to green building, green technologies. There's a lot of work that the hospital has done over years to reduce everything from greenhouse gas emissions to reducing energy consumption, energy usage. Luminous Health had one of the first acute care hospitals in the state that was LEED Gold certified, which was at Anarondo. This one will follow the same suit. Last couple of hospitals we built were LEED, LEED Gold as well. So we're targeting LEED Silver for this. There's a lot of design requirements these days that go above and beyond the codes. So what we did five years ago, six years ago, is a little different. So we have to go above and beyond the standard energy codes and things like that. Another condition was, is why we're here today, is communication, right? And I think that is first and foremost. So there's three areas, three residential groups that are right around us. It's Greenspring One, Greenspring Two. I think it's a Greenbrook Estates, which borders our property. So it's really trying to develop the communication line. So as we start into the construction and renovation phases, keeping you informed of what's going on, how do we communicate to the community, how to communicate to each other, and have a two-way path for communication. So you guys can ask us questions. We can keep you informed. Elizabeth's here from Markham, they're marketing communications. They can talk about websites, we're going to stand up and stuff like that. So we have different ways of reaching out and distributing information. Landscaping, part of the concern was about the landscape buffers, some of those things that exist on the property. So sometime around the middle of 2022, you guys also supported us because the master plan had Braybrook Drive on the back of our property, which was a road that was to extend through. So what we did is we, we added that to, to the, to the conservation. So we permanently put it into reservation within ourselves for conservation. And that'll, that, that piece of property will never be developed. So it was that part. We also looked at, and working with Terry, developing the landscaping plans that increased vegetation and trees, things that we could plant that stayed green all year round to help with the visual side of seeing a hospital right next to the residential neighborhood. So when those grow up and mature, you know, it'll help with sound attenuation, light attenuation. Within, within LEED also has, you know, reduction of light pollution. So one of the requirements is to keep light on the campus and not spill over into residential neighborhoods or surrounding neighborhoods. Throughout construction, we have, we're working with a construction company to put noise monitors or sound monitors around the campus. If, if the noise becomes too great, there is some county requirements and ways we can measure that to stay within compliance. But if there's ever a concern, you can always reach out to us and we can, we can bring that up.
Yeah, I appreciate that. The neighborhoods or homeowner associations that you mentioned, Greenspring One, Greenspring Two, and to a lesser extent, Greenbrook Estates, very stable neighborhoods, single-family homes that have been there for quite some time, well-maintained with small yards. And the topography of the site is, it's a challenge because, I mean, it's quite a bit higher than, I guess it's Greenspring Two, which is right there at the power lines. So I got a call just a few days ago from one of the residents there. He's been living there with his family for a long time. And he was saying, he was specifically asking about the landscaping of some sort of containment barriers or fencing could be placed around the generator. Apparently, the generator kicked on last week, week and a half ago, and it was very loud. So it's more than just landscaping. It's actually thinking proactively about what's going to happen in the future, but also trying to address. but also trying to address some of the current concerns that are there. So the communication is just very, very important. Does that generator that's kind of behind the hospital, does that kick on pretty often or only when there's an outage or something?
Commonly where's an outage, but there is a requirement because we're a hospital to run it for a certain period of time every month to test it and make sure it works.
It's probably what happened. Would that, could that have happened any time of day or night?
Yeah, if you lose power, it can happen anytime. Typically, our-
Testing, would that only happen nine to five?
Also, according to the regulations around hospitals, we have to do that generator testing at random times. So it's a lot of regulations we have from CMS, Joint Commission, and others. And part of that is, you know, they don't want you just doing things during regular daytime hours. You got to demonstrate that you have twenty-four seven capabilities.
That makes sense. So with the communication thing, when that happens, there's a big test or something of cell phones nationally. So everybody knew about it before it happened. So communication's really important.
One of the things we're doing to address the generators is that we're going to consolidate them and we're going to put them in a building and we'll put sound attenuation to them. Part of it is the age of them, but part of it is gets it out of the, out of visual sightlines. But we also did a noise study to determine how much noise will be created at the border. So we're going to address that throughout the project.
Deneen, so Mr. Gordon, you want to go now?
Yeah, I can, actually, because we're talking about services and obviously doing things that really help enhance quality of services at the hospital. So question, obviously, wait times is a county-wide thing. And so the reason my question I had, obviously, you know, the county, about a week or so ago, at the behest, I think it was the LEED legislation by Vice Chair Wala Bagay, CR eighty-two, which passed, which creates a resolution to create a task force to study wait times throughout the county. And I was curious, how do you folks want to approach that? Obviously, when that does start to kick off, how do you plan, folks plan to approach that? Because, you know, obviously, it's a long-going thing, you're here running a county and obviously different medical facilities. So I'm just curious.
I'll start and also invite my colleague Davion to weigh in because he's very close to the things that are happening at the council. So one, yeah. We aren't, I will just start by saying, we aren't waiting for the task force to start for the council. We've been working on these issues. It's actually one of our key quality indicators. So we look at this data continuously internally. We also have been participating, everybody is looking at ED wait times appropriately. So Maryland has some of the worst numbers in the country. And Prince George's County has some of the worst numbers of the state. So we recognize that this is an issue. So we've been working on it very intensely internally. There also are efforts that were started several months back by the Health Services Cost Review Commission. We're a part of that. There was a task force that was formed in the prior legislative session that the Maryland Hospital Association is helping to coordinate. So we will just continue the work that we're doing around this. But Davion, please chime in and add.
Yeah, absolutely. So we have been proactive in addressing emergency department, emergency room wait times. We recently implemented the EMS drop-off zone, which we're still moving forward and refining. But when it comes to the emergency room wait times task force, we were very active in working with Vice Chair Lee Gay on that legislation. We've actually requested to be a part of that task force.
Awesome.
Because we want to be a part of the solution, right? You know, we know that it takes, just like we say, it takes a village to raise a child. In this case, it takes a village to get that wait times down, right? Because we're looking at not only throughput issues in the hospitals, but issues of delayed care, issues surrounding not having the appropriate primary care and other care in the, in the, in the community. So that, how do we minimize people using the emergency room for your primary care, et cetera? So we worked directly with Vice Chair Lee Gay and the co-sponsors on that legislation. And we're looking forward to continuing to work with them to find a solution that we can all agree on in reducing wait times in Prince George's County.
I'm glad to hear that because obviously that, like you were saying, affects wait times. Because most folks who don't need to do that, they should be doing the primary care to cut that down. So I'm glad that you folks are being proactive on it. Thank you.
We're fortunate to have good access to primary healthcare in Greenbelt by having a federally qualified health center here. And the county just broke ground on a new facility, so we're very fortunate. Speaking of the hospital association, I was just on a call about ten or fifteen minutes ago with Melanie Griffin. I guess she's coming in as the new-
Yes.
-hospital association chair. Very exciting time. Councilmember McKinney.
A question going back to services. I'm glad to hear about the expansion in looking at women's health in particular. But I have a couple of questions on how are you integrating color in services for pregnancy, a lot of high-risk pregnancies. Will you be looking at ensuring that you'll have those types of services that are able to cover high-risk pregnancies? Because a lot of times that's why women are going to look at other facilities because they need that. Know if part of the services, the women's services, will also offer like midwifery services or things like that? I'm just curious to know a little bit.
No, excellent questions. And you're so right, you know, the maternal mortality rates among women of color are unconscionable, to be very honest. And so we are very much, we have a women's and children's. So while we don't offer these services currently at doctors, as a system, we have a women's and children's service line that is led by Dr. Monica Jones. And her team has been very, very much in tune to these issues, even on our Anarundel campus. For those who may not be aware, Anarundel Medical Center is the second-largest birthing hospital in the state of Maryland. So we're bringing all of that expertise and the work that we've been doing that we will be able to leverage at our land and campus as well. Specific to some of those issues, both of our hospitals, even though we don't deliver, believe it or not, we do have women who come into our emergency department and imminently need to deliver. So even right now at doctors as well as at Anarundel, we are part of the Maryland Birth Equity Initiative that has a number of stakeholders and participating in a number of other national and statewide initiatives around decreasing maternal mortality. Some other things that we're doing specific, I mentioned that we just recently opened a new practice here in Greenbelt. So one of the other techniques or strategies that we're offering is what's referred to as centering. And that involves group visits during maternal, during the prenatal period with a special focus on some of these factors that we know lead to maternal mortality. And that team has really looked at the focus not just being during the immediate birth period, but up to a year postpartum. So there's a number of services that they offer and integrate into the care model that literally track and follow those women up to a year after their birth. So that is, and it aligns very much with our heart force. When I talk about our health equity and anti-racism task force, we have aligned that work with one of the, with a number of those initiatives as well. So it's definitely a focus of the work that we are doing and will be doing even more of once we're offering delivery services at doctors.
You mentioned maternal care office opening up in Greenway Center. And, you know, I think I may have heard something about, I'm not sure. So is it in the center itself or is it in one of the buildings in the trade center, right behind there?
I was just there a couple of months ago for the grand opening.
Just in the back?
Three hundred, Greenway Center Drive.
I think that is there.
High-rise building there.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
How large is that?
Oh, boy. I don't have that information off of the top of my head. But we can definitely follow up and get that information to you. And I also know that in that same building, we just, in the last couple of weeks, I was talking to our Vice President of the Luminous Health Clinical Enterprises. And we actually are opting to extend our lease to take more office space on that floor, some of which will be used for some of other multi-specialty services that we want to be able to co-locate with that. But we can follow up and get the exact address. I think you are right, seven-three-hundred, and square footage of the space we have and the space that we're expanding to.
What is the services offered? Because we'd like to get this information out to the community.
Definitely. Yeah, you know, you know, we're sort of in, I mean, the whole world, the United States, state of flux when it comes to office space. And we do have a real concentration of medical services here in Greenbelt. So one thing that I'm particularly interested in is trying to work with you to do anything that we can to attract and retain healthcare practitioners in Greenbelt. We, economic development staff that's focused in on business retention. But I'd really like to work with you guys to take it a step further so that we can have, just kind of build up what we already have. Everybody's talking largo this, largo that. And we've got it right here, we've always had it, and it seems to really be taking hold. So in these times where we're concerned, greatly concerned about office space and vacancies, you know, it just seems to me, from what I've heard, that medical providers aren't looking closely at Greenbelt and staying here. And what we can do to attract more is something that we want to work on.
We won't get too political, but-
We do have office space.
Yes, no, no. And we are, like I said, we are even expanding that lease and, you know, I don't want to get ahead of the federal politics, but we also are very excited about the recent announcement of the FBI headquarters in Greenbelt being selected. And we think that that's only going to, I know you said everybody's talking largo, 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 but I think very soon we'll all be talking Greenbelt, Greenbelt, Greenbelt.
Fact that there are other medical providers are looking to expand in Greenbelt. So we want to work with you. Let's kind of wrap up, talk a little bit more about the plans for the future and the expansion. And we'll circle back, we'll take some questions from the public and delve a little bit more deeply. I think we'll probably be able to finish up by about nine o'clock.
Yes. So Luke, I don't think, maybe if you could just summarize and cover anything that we haven't addressed yet?
No, we covered, I mean, the key points of the, of the conditions.
Okay. So maybe we can go to the next slide? Next one? Because you talked about LEED already. Okay, great.
This is the one that I want to take a close look at. Also, I want to get some input from our Director of Planning and Community Development because I know she's very, very aware of the plans and probably has some comments, some things for us all to think about.
There's five major components to this first real phase of the project. So it's, it's building the perimeter road is first and foremost. You've got to build the road in order to move the loading dock that Deneen talked about to give us our ways to get around the campus. And really focused on improving the safety on campus, but as well as improving the safety on Good Luck Road. So the primary entrance for visitors and patients is going to be off, is the current entrance that you guys are familiar with. And then we work with the county to create a secondary entrance off Mallory Drive, which will be the primary exit. So we're going to push contractors, your vendors to that, that entrance. And it'll be signalized. So we're working with the county to do the road improvements, there's frontage improvements, there's roadway improvements along Good Luck Road as well. Really the focus of that. As we do the roads, we'll do, put utilities in. So that's really the first major phase. We're looking at starting that just after the first year. Main entrance that you know now and the Mallory Drive entrance. So we'll start in those two areas and work our way around to the perimeter.
Looking at that diagram from left to right, the right-hand side, is that Mallory Drive where the gray area starts?
Yeah, where the green line, it's like a green dash line, it's basically the dash, that's Mallory Drive.
Hey, and just, just above there, there's sort of a white square up there towards the top right. Would that be Magnolia Elementary School?
It's the church.
That's the church. So Magnolia would be a little bit higher. It's not quite in the picture, but it is up there above the turquoise line towards the center.
And we have the resident, we have the rehab.
Rehab home, yeah. It's a rehabilitation center, I think.
Correct. And then behind that is the school.
Okay, okay. Ms. Pope?
Question, the Mallory Drive entrance, that is the, is that the road that goes up to the rehab place? Okay. Yeah, because I just was driving around there and somehow I ended up somewhere in the back and a big voice came on, "You're trespassing, you have to leave, you're recorded." And I'm like, oh my goodness. So I had to maneuver because I didn't know where to go. So the signage was a little, I couldn't, I mean, it was probably my fault, but, so it was very interesting.
This is so close to us. I think Ms. Pope has an acquaintance that's in the rehab center right now. And Mr. Gordon's been up there and I've been up there.
In the surgical unit for the past, twice in the last ten weeks. And this is her second time now in the rehabilitation. So unfortunately, she is-
Guess I've never ventured that far. I'm not familiar with it.
Yeah, so, but it was interesting, but it was like a-
What kind of a voice was it, was sort of a deep?
Oh, it was, it was, it was serious. I mean, it was, it was very serious.
Briefed by Safety and Security last week, they installed some kind of device back there.
I'm on one of those tapes, I'm taped on one of those. Yeah. So, but I know Mallory Drive now, I know exactly where to go, so I'm just want to make sure.
The first part is putting the roadways in. That gives us ability to start the development inside the campus. The second major part-
Q one, that would be January.
Yeah, January, February timing, correct. Phase is starting the parking garage. So we have, that's going to start, so we're going to provide parking on campus, inside structured parking, keep it out of the weather, give us more access to ED, main- Parking garage that'll start a little later in springtime. So that'll be the second part. And the third part is really-
So that's structured parking, so that's where, there's existing parking there. The building all the way to the right, that's structured parking also. So where, where will the people who usually park? I guess it's staff and patients who patient, who park where number two is now. But you're going to build a structured parking lot there?
Correct. Yeah, so it currently is, part of that does have parking on it. So they're going to be displaced on campus, they'll have to park in some other parking spots while we build this. But once it's built, it'll be able to hold about three hundred and seventy-five cars and take a big part of that. So it's really trying to get our patients and visitors out.
Ms. Pope?
So a quick question about parking. Are you planning on having an entrance from the parking garage into the hospital? Like, you know, like a, like a, like a walkway, like a covered structure or something? So you don't have to go out of the parking garage and-
Yeah, well, you're going to have to depart the parking garage to get into the main hospital, but it'll be a covered walkway.
Is part of the landscaping and the exterior, will you also be improving like wayfinding and signage and things like that? Because it can be a little bit confusing and now with the additional entrance, that might be a little-
Yes, we find, once we start changing the signs and the destinations, yes, wayfinding is very important. We've already had that consultant on board to help us with wayfinding, not only in the final stage, but all the interim phases. So as we start moving roadways and entry points, it's really important to get people where they need to. Second was the parking garage. The third part is really makes up the rest of the site work, which is the loading dock. So once we just build the road, we're able to displace the loading dock, we'll put it in a more appropriate location and connect it into the back of the hospital. That'll help us in a couple of ways. One is we'll be able to receive vehicles or receive deliveries safely, but it also gets our traffic to the Mallory Drive entrance as well. Tractor and trailers, those kind of things, we won't have to co-mingle with visitors and patients coming on the camp.
So Mallory Drive, you're planning on actually expanding Mallory Drive? Extended. And will it be, I think it's two lanes now, so this is going to be three or four lanes?
It's wide enough right now. We've worked with the county and D-PY and the other planners to make sure- Good there. It just becomes private, as soon as you get to the top of Mallory Drive, it'll become a private drive on our campus.
Just looking at that diagram again, looking at the left-hand upper corner, that's white. So is that where the power lines are, the right-of-way before you get into Greenspring?
Well, the power lines are where the north arrow is. That's the Pepco right-of-way. So that's what you, yeah.
But there's, there's another set of power lines sort of behind the houses, or there's something behind-
BGNE has a, has a power lines behind there. And they, they follow that Braybrook Drive, so we won't be impacting those.
Please continue.
So those, really the, the road, the park construction, the loading dock is what we're going to experience over the next two, two and a half years, is putting those- is putting those elements in. Um, and once those are set in place, then it opens up the rest of the site to actually expand the the main hospital and then begin doing the renovation. Experience is construction in the next, you know, two to three months, starting on, starting, and it's going to be site work. We put on this slide. This slide just shows the current state of affairs where all the traffic comes in, one entrance. And then the the future plan, we're done with the roadways, is to really distribute the the traffic as appropriate. Uh, one of the conditions was to help uh onsite and offsite circulations for pedestrians and people who use bikes. So, we're going to connect sidewalks. We're going to have sidewalks around the road as well as connecting into the the county's public walk to campus without having to walk on the roads that are active. Um, but what this does for us is also helps separate out the ED traffic, ED and ambulance traffic uh from the rest of the the traffic around the
So, uh looking at that diagram, the red line, is that, would ambulances be coming in following that red land to, red line to the emergency entrance?
Yes, the red line is the ambulance that was like a be able to access the garage from directly across the ED.
Want to ask just another question about that top right corner and the uh the boundary between Greenspring Two and the hospital. Because I know it's a pretty steep hill, but she talked about consolidating the generators and uh seems if you're going to do that, uh just attenuating the the noise uh is something maybe with landscaping. I don't know how long you have to wait before you start to uh make some uh provisions to mitigate uh some of the impacts during construction even. That's very important. So, and I'm going to ask Ms. Ruby to to kind of comment in general uh in a moment. Is that the line, that white line in the left-hand corner? And and what what can you do? What will you do to to mitigate mitigate the impacts of of the construction, particularly of the perimeter road?
Well, a couple of things we're going to try to do. Uh, one is, you know, work during the appropriate hours. I think Prince George's County has specific regulations for the hours, so we can't be in there at six-thirty like contractors like to. Um, so it'll be following that. I believe it's somewhere around eight to eight-thirty, something like that. Beyond that, it's just trying to limit the every, you know, backup noise from the the vehicles. It's for safety. I mean, unfortunately, you have to have those kind of things. Um, but really try to contain it on campus as of the best we can. Um. Guys are close to our perimeter. So, we're going to start in the front corners first where the roadways are and then we'll work around to the back.
Because I I and we're very concerned about that. So, hey, hey, uh Terry Ruby, can you took, talk a little bit about the communication uh that that's taken place between the last work session that we had and where we are today and some, I don't know. Has APB, the our Advisory Planning Board, have they looked or seen any of these plans or?
These plans all went to the Advisory Planning Board as well as City Council. Um, and as you know, we we weighed in very heavily. Um, and we, during that process, we worked very closely together uh to make improvements to the plan, to, you know, as we indicated, to abandon Braybrook Drive so that can also be reforested, to look at the buffers and how we can enhance those buffers beyond what they were originally proposing. I think we worked together to really maximize that opportunity. I mean, there's no getting around, there will be impacts, especially during construction because planning and stabilization does not occur really until the last phase. Um, but again, we'll address that through noise, um but mainly address that through communications. We had a very productive meeting with our PIO officer, their outreach marketing team and so forth. We've identified a number of ways that we can outreach to the community. Um, we did communicate this meeting with those three HOAs that were aware of it. We, I provided them with the link where they could find information on the presentation and to the meeting in case they were unable to attend as well. So, our our goal is to maintain that open dialogue, uh to work closely with Luminous on that, those outreach. We provided contacts for all those communities to them. Um, so it's really, you know, informing them. So, when they hear those impacts, they understand it's a result of progress and what that progress will mean in the long term. And I think it's key that, you know, a lot of this information tonight, I, you know, I I don't think the community is aware of it. And I think that, you know, they understand what the end result will be and how it will be benefiting them as well as the community as a whole. Will hopefully, you know, tame a little bit, if you will, the impacts and the complaints we receive, but I mean, there's no, you know, getting around. There will be impacts. I mean, they are fairly close. As you indicated, topography is not in our favor. So, all we can do is is keep lines of communication and have a point contact if if they have concerns, that we can at least communicate those and see if we can address them. Um, and and again, work hours, you know, we'll minimize those. Um, Prince George's, while they are not in Greenbelt, they won't be bound to ours, but ours work hours are similar to Prince George's County. They they have standards in place too in terms of weekend work, holiday work, to try to minimize impacts of those, so that we'll be home at those times.
Yeah, appreciate that. And and the emphasis on our proactive communication, it it's just, it's crucial. Because as as Ms. Ruby just said, uh as best we try and keep our residents informed necessarily know until uh they're having the impact, experiencing it, and we get the calls and we'll forward them to you. It's more than forwarding calls. It's really trying to address these things before they actually come up. Uh, Mayor Potem, we'll take a couple of questions from council, from the public, and then we'll kind of circle back more broadly and just talk a little bit.
I, excuse me, yeah, peeking ahead, because I think the next slide talks about some of those communication efforts. But I wonder, do you have any plans uh to uh send out flyers or send out mailers to at least those those houses in the most immediate vicinity? Or do any, you know, hang things on doors or anything like that, just to maybe let them know about the website and so where they can get updates? Is that in the plan at all?
Yeah, so we're finalizing those plans. Um, you know, what's top of mind for us is number one, making sure that we communicate with you all um and and your administration, making sure that we stay in contact with the community leaders. So, what we're going to be doing first, you'll be hearing from me within the next couple of weeks. I want to make sure that we have the proper contact information for key community leaders that we need to be in 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 contact with constantly. Uh, we are working with um with um other stakeholders within our system to determine what that outreach looks like beyond just the electronic communication. Uh, we will have a single uh email address that the community can uh contact us on if they have some concerns as well as the website and as well as key points of contact. Um, I believe I'll be primarily serving as the point of contact for you all as elected officials. And um and we'll have, in addition to me, others within our system that will serve as the primary POCs uh for the community. The other thing that we're going to do is to make sure, so that you all are aware, because we want to be partners in this. We're all in this together. We want want to work together to bring this to fruition. Um, we want to make sure that before we send out any communication of of any major events uh to the community, that you all are aware at least a week to two in advance.
Thank you.
So that you can, you can have any questions answered. Um, also, if you receive community complaints, we don't want you all to be blindsided. And we're just going to continue to be a partner with that. So, that includes you all, um the city, the county, and our respective state partners that represents this area. So, we'll be in touch about that, but that is very important to us. And um I assure you that we're not going to drop the ball on that communication piece.
Ms. Pope?
So, I I would hope that we can maybe share that that email address that you said where people can uh ask you questions, that we maybe be able to put that on our website as well, so people can just get a link on there. That probably would be very helpful. And I do just want to say thank you. Um, you know, I, my family was in need of emergency services last year and uh we received excellent care in your emergency department. I mean, all the way through the helicopter taking someone, uh taking my husband downtown eventually, but um it was first-class service and definitely life-saving service. So, I want to thank you for all the efforts that you're um providing and 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 how how your facilities run. It was really impressive. Thank you.
Thank you.
I've been enough times, I probably owe you guys rent money. So.
Really are appreciative of you trusting us um for your healthcare needs.
I remember that, Ms. Pope.
Yeah, it's definitely very calming to know that we have a facility like this really right down the road from us, you know, because emergencies can happen at any time. You never know. And um just to thought that that if something happens, you you'll be in good hands. You know, you don't have to be afraid to walk through those door, being um taken through those doors. So, that's very, very calming and 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 um for our residents, of course, as well.
Yeah, just a few, about a month ago, I guess, one of our, there's an incident at our tennis courts and someone had a heart attack. I mean, down there. Response was was great. Where where does that, where would a helicopter land? Are they on campus or?
But when it comes back, it'll be in a very similar location to what it is currently.
Yeah.
You said currently?
One of the other slides with the numbers, would it be easier for you to point it out there, Luke?
It's on the east side. So, when when Mallory Drive comes up and connects to our road, uh right where the, it looks like the two parking lots on the kind of the top right-hand side. There's a grass area. That's, it'll be in that area.
Okay. And also, you know, as you're planning the communication of the the neighborhood there in Lanham, uh I guess, is that the Magnolia neighborhood? The the area that's where the single-family homes, are you reaching out to them as well?
Yes.
So, there's a couple of questions from the public. I gotta recognize Mr. Orleans.
Thank you. If I could ask Ms. Anderson to put up the earlier slide, uh what to expect and when to expect it. I think this is
A routine, but could you state your name, where you live?
Uh, Bill Orleans, Greenbelt. If we could go to slide eight for the moment. I have a question on slide eight. We jumped to slide eight from slide five. I also have a question on slide six as well as slide five.
If you could, you know, one question or?
I have several questions, Ms. Mayor. Uh, it doesn't appear on this visual, uh but the old, uh the the nursing facility, which replaced the old Magnolia Nursing Facility, is somewhat south of where it says expect. And that's not included on either of these two campus slides as being part of your campus. Is that no longer part of Luminous' doctor's hospital campus?
Part of our property. It still remains part of our property.
I just thought if that's the case, and I'm glad to hear it's the case, that it somehow should be represented in your slides, but it's not. That's one question. With regard to what to expect and when to expect it on slide eight, uh there's two items on the bottom, phase four, phase five, five, both have in parentheses, con pending. I simply don't know what con is. What's con pending mean?
Certificate of Need.
Certificate of Need, thank you very much. On slide uh five, uh or on slide five, the box at the top uh refers to the Site Landscape and Tree Preservation Exhibit dated February twenty twenty-two. I I just don't know, uh I don't recall seeing that. Maybe I have, but I don't know to who that slide was exhibited. Uh, or that plan was exhibited. Was it City Council, County Council, the planning board, possibly your Board of Directors? Who who was that exhibit exhibited to? And if I've not seen that, I'd like to see it.
So, that that exhibit was part of the uh Terry and her group at the time to refine that in order to get it submitted.
So, Ms. Ruby would have a copy of that exhibit? Would she care to confirm that she has a copy of that?
I'd have to see if if there were any revisions made at the county, we don't receive the revised copy, but uh I'm sure we'll have a copy in our position.
Okay, my last question is on on the next slide, page, uh slide uh six. In the big box in the middle, it suggests that if the TCPI proposes extinguishment, et cetera. And the next uh box over, it says if a reduction to the width of the existing vegetated buffer, et cetera. Who's proposing these? Who's uh and who's approving the this proposal? Uh, if these proposals presumably are approved, it doesn't say that precisely, then you would do this and that. Who is it being proposed to and uh what specifically is the proposal? This is just a slide saying that this, these plans exist. It doesn't say what those plans are.
So, on the campus, there was an existing conservation easement. Modify that. And we did work with the Maryland National Capital Park and Planning Commission to make those modifications. Um, part of it was in the adjustment of the area that the allocation of Braybrook Drive helped the onsite forest conservation. But we also had to purchase upwards of twenty-five acres within the same watershed for conservation credits.
But not in Greenbelt?
I, I'm not exactly.
So, you're not required to do that, you know?
Do you know when the planning board is uh going to consider these two proposals? They've already been approved. Oh, well, then maybe this line should have been updated to say, since it was already approved, we're going to go ahead and do.
Mr. Orleans, please.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. I I did have a question. So, the certificate of need process, uh when are you expecting that to be considered? And just, I'm trying to, it, does that go through the Health Department? Or does it go through the Board of Public Works in the state of Maryland?
Um, the the approval bodies for certificate of need in Maryland is the Maryland Healthcare Commission. At this time, we are, um, we expect to be on their December agenda. I don't remember the exact date off the top of my head, but I know it's mid-December. They meet on a monthly basis and this will be one of the items that will be addressed at their regularly scheduled December meeting.
Looking for a uh letter of support or anything from the city?
So, our application, I think, included, and Dave Young can correct me, probably well over three hundred letters.
Letter from the city.
Yes, including. So, that had to, those letters of support were um part of the application process and we appreciate the support.
We did give you one, right?
Yes.
See, we have another question from the public. Ma'am, could you please go to the podium and state your name and where you live?
Jay Davis, Greenbelt East. Um, some of my questions are going to be um duplicative because I really cannot understand you because you speak so low. I couldn't understand you when you were answering some of the questions. Uh, but first of all, um myself and my significant other have used doctor's hospital Luminous numerous times, numerous times. And unfortunately, the last time when I needed emergency service, uh the ER was closed. Uh, maybe it was too many people. It was in the middle of the day, but I was taken to another facility, which unfortunately did not give me as great a service as I would have probably have received at doctor's or Luminous. Since it's been a year since we discussed this, I'm glad to hear that you're going to be doing communication with the homeowners associations again very, very soon. I would do it as soon as possible. If you're going to start in January with the roadwork, uh there, a lot of them are going to be very surprised because we do have new owners. And um just notifying by email to wherever you think it's going, but it should also go to their boards, homeowner boards, association boards, because sometimes the boards don't talk with their managers and the managers don't necessarily talk with the boards. Uh, we know that. Um, and having a link from the the city website is probably a very good idea because there are going to be questions immediately. What are those people doing up there? I mean, it's, it is a high level. I was concerned about the um forest easement that you said, but that that's where I'm going to ask again because there was a roadway. You're saying now that roadway will not be developed? And so, that's, does that mean that the buffer area is going to be less wide or more wide or whatever?
Buffer is going to include that space.
It'll be wider. Okay. How many trees are coming down? What, okay, but there's a certain area of trees and that's what is has to be mitigated. Is that correct, Ms. Ruby?
Right. And that information, I believe the plans are on, that was information that was shared with the public and ourselves, and I believe those plans are still available on our website and I can just make sure that they are.
Okay. The main problem that they were asking for um some testing to be done is because of headlights going around. Because since you're high, it could affect the communities down below. So, I'm I'm assuming that those tests will be done in a fairly soon, a fairly soon, or have they been done?
Get some studies to look at traffic around the campus and on the Certain density so that it'll minimize that light.
And are you having road, streetlight fixtures? And the lighting is downcast?
Have reflectors going on the lights so that it limits the pollution.
Okay.
After walking around in the in the later hours of the evening.
And I know that APB did look at this, but hopefully, when you're designing the parking garage, have you finished the designs for the parking garage yet? Have Ms. Ruby, have those been given to APB to look at? Okay. The reason for that is because we are going to, if you're driving a Hanover Parkway, it's very possible that we will see at least one side of it. And I know that when we had discussions on this, we were interested in looking at how you were going to treat that as far as the visual impact on the people who are traveling on Hanover Parkway. How many levels were you planning to have in the parking garage? Three, oh, that's not too bad. That's pretty good.
I tried to. The intent is to keep it low so you see more of the hospital, so you know where your destinations are when you come on campus. But there is some treatments we're doing that may get enough.
So it sounds like you're planning to put signage on the parking garage. Illuminated signage, so. Okay. But it's all interesting to the people who live in that particular area. So and obviously, when the health pavilion comes, it is hopefully approved. I think it's very necessary. All of the improvements that you're talking about are very necessary, and I'm glad to see that they are. It will bring our, I like to think of it as Greenbelt's hospital, even though it's not in Greenbelt, that we keep saying, you know, we could be, we could ask you to come in anytime, you know, the city could love to annex you. We've talked about that numerous times. So it sounds like construction is finally going to begin in January as far as the roadway, and then in the spring will be the parking garage. And we'll see that design before, excuse me, the city will see the design, excuse my, I keep using we, I need to get into bad habits, get out of bad habits there. So that'll appear before the city then. Not, not, not just chair. It should go to the city to look at the design for the parking garage. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Hey, it occurs to me with the communication piece, Greenspring one, Greenspring two, Greenbrook Estates, not so much, but also, but there's another street. Is it Green Crescent Road? There's single family homes. Green Crescent Court. Okay. It's Green, okay. I just want to make sure that they're included. So this has been very informative. I had a couple of general questions. I just came back as several members of council just came back from the National League of Cities Conference, municipal officials from cities, towns, villages across the country, where there's close to 4,000 of us. So there's a lot of discussion about healthcare and particular fentanyl and fentanyl overdoses. So I know that one of the initiatives that you have undertaken is outpatient mental health and substance abuse beds. I think you said there are eight at the hospital now.
So we provide general services like therapy, outpatient therapy for both mental health as well as substance use conditions. As far as the, I think what you're referencing were what I was referring to as our eight residential, which is still considered an outpatient therapy, even though the term residential can be a little confusing. And we are currently in discussions with the county around funding that would allow us to open eight residential crisis beds that will be geared toward adolescents.
So still, you know, just asking that general question about what what you see, what you're seeing in the emergency rooms. Are you seeing, looking at the statistics, there was a graph of the United States, and they said that fentanyl overdoses were actually down a little bit in the state of Maryland. But I'm wondering if you are seeing overdoses from fentanyl from time to time, or is it more PCP? Or are you, what are you, what are you seeing? What's coming into the emergency room?
Yeah, so there's, I would say a couple of things. One, there's a lot of, as you would probably expect, what we refer to as comorbid, meaning that people with mental health issues who may, because of their mental health conditions, also be using substances. We do, obviously, you know, on an emergency basis, we'll see, unfortunately, I wouldn't be able to give you the exact numbers tonight, but we obviously do see people who are coming in due to acute substance crisis. Fortunately, what I will share is that there's been so many initiatives in the community, and we support those as far as community access to Narcan, that that you're seeing. I would, I don't want to give exact numbers because I don't have those numbers right now, but I do believe it's probably safe to say that as a result of that, we're seeing fewer deaths due to fentanyl because people are able to get that early and accessible access to Narcan, which is serves as a reversal agent for the acute overdose. Obviously, they still need treatment beyond that acute overdose, but that is, I would say, having an impact on deaths.
Well, appreciate the outreach and screening efforts, the collaborations, just at our farmer's market, I guess it was two weeks ago, we had some screening truck and I got my cholesterol checked. It hurt a lot when they poked my finger, but I'm manned up.
We're sorry.
But I don't know. If you do a fentanyl training, perhaps it's something we could share with our employees or with, I know the police department is, does a lot of training, but that's one more thing that we might do.
Yeah, we can explore that. I know right now, and thank you for bringing up the community screenings that we're doing. In fact, I was just had a meeting today with our Director of Community Health Improvement, who's been with us a couple of months now, and she was reminding me that we're doing the screenings here in Greenbelt. And she actually just gave me a quick number. So far, we've provided over 300 or screened, I should say, over 300 people, and that's blood pressure, cholesterol, and blood glucose checks, as well as hemoglobin A1C, which is another long-term marker of someone's blood glucose. And then obviously, we also are providing health education to those who screen positive. And another part of our services is getting people plugged into a medical home and other services if they should need it. So we appreciate that partnership as well, and we think that that prevention and detection is so critical to decreasing the disease burden in Prince George's County.
Kind of back to the emergency room, you know, just such difficult times that we're living through and seeing gun, gun violence in Greenbelt, in Prince George's County, and, you know, throughout the nation. And all too often, young people are involved, youth. So are you, I think, you're not, when someone is critically injured, they don't necessarily come to Doctor's Hospital?
That's correct. We are classified as a community hospital, and we are not a trauma-level hospital. So frequently, if, now, obviously, we have people who will sometimes drive and sometimes drop off people at the door. But when EMS is involved, the Emergency Medical Services, gunshot victims will be prioritized and taken to a trauma hospital. Here in Prince George's County, University of Maryland Capital Regional Health is the one designated trauma hospital. I believe they're trauma level two, if I'm not mistaken. And then obviously, there are situations where people are airlifted to University of Maryland Baltimore, the main campus, which is a level one trauma. Also, in Prince George's County, depending on location and other factors, people may also be taken to Washington Hospital Center, MedStar Washington Hospital Center, which is the other level one trauma center closest to this area.
Kids sometimes.
And children's, I should have mentioned Children's National Medical Center for for kids as well. You're correct.
So, you know, in the unlikely instance that was described before where the emergency room is closed, where where should people go?
So I just want to clarify that statement of the emergency room being closed. There's, without getting into too much detail tonight, we're happy to talk about it in greater detail. Prince George's County, as almost most counties do, have worked, we work very closely in partnership with Emergency Medical Services, and they have what they refer to as two different types of diversion. So here in Prince George's County, people refer to yellow and red. What that basically means is that there are times when our hospitals are on diversion. We don't say closed because there still are some special circumstances where they may, you know, still with us being on diversion, have to bring somebody for lifesaving purposes. But when a hospital is on diversion, it can be for one of two reasons typically. One is that the emergency room itself is, has reached a level of crowdedness that people, the concern is you want people to be able to get the care that they need in a timely fashion. So EMS monitors, I mean, it's not uncommon sometimes for us to get five, six ambulances arriving at the same time. If that's the case, and they know what type of cases they've just brought to us, we may go on a temporary diversion, which means that they will bypass us if safe and take the next ambulance to a different location to allow us time to get those who were just brought in stabilized. The other reason typically why hospitals go on diversion is because of lack of what we refer to as telemetry beds, heart monitoring. So there are times when if we don't have a bed open and they know that the person that they're bringing in might need that type of heart monitoring, then it's a, that's a different type of diversion. Even when we're on diversion, walk-ins still happen. And honestly, sometimes the people coming in as walk-ins are just as sick, if not sicker, than those who call 911 and get brought in by EMS. So we do track that very carefully. We try to minimize, you know, we, we have a lot of just-in-time processes and procedures that we put in place to merely make sure that we're having good throughput in both the emergency room, as well as typically when there's issues with diversion, it's not always the emergency room, it's what's happening upstairs, as I like to say, in the hospital. And that goes back to some of our earlier comments is that, you know, when we get clogged up because we don't have places to discharge patients who no longer require acute care, all of those factors, and that's part of what's being looked at here in Prince George's County is part of the ED wait time issue. It's not just what's happening in the emergency room, it's what's happening collectively across all of the healthcare services. So we do monitor diversion hours and do everything that we humanly can to try to minimize them. The only other third situation that can sometimes lead to diversion is if we have something that has happened in the hospital. For example, while we once again try to minimize this, we had a situation where our, it was either our CAT scan or MRI machine was temporarily down, and we had an emergency technician on the way there. But if we know that we can't do certain types of diagnostic studies that might be needed, we share that with EMS, and they make the best decision as to where the, a particular patient might be taken. So those are all kind of the scenarios that typically exist, why someone might be told you're going to be taken to another hospital instead of doctors, even though you're closest to doctors.
That makes sense. Couple of questions. One more quick one has to do with, you know, you mentioned running the generators random times. That sort of made me think about training and preparing for disaster planning and whatnot. So are you in communications with, you know, with the schools and whatnot? Or do you train for mass events?
We are as part of our accreditation with the Joint Commission, with the state and others. I wouldn't, I'm not sure that I would, no, it's more internal. Some of these are tabletop disaster exercises, but we also do simulations. But I'm not aware that we, that those are done in conjunction with outside partners. They're done with our own emergency management, clinical staff, and others.
That that makes sense, but it would also be a good thing maybe to, with our police department, if you're doing tabletop, occasionally do a tabletop and include our police department. So I know that the communication is maybe better than than council knows between our police department and the hospital, but that might be helpful.
Look at the feasibility.
Ms. McKitty and then Mr. Gordon.
Back on to the communication piece, I, and you were talking about diversion and things like that. How does a family or a person who might already be in the hospital get communicated to or about if they need to get diverted to another facility? So we've had, unfortunately, in my family, where we had to have someone be located and moved. So how do you communicate that frequently? And are you, are you looking at that in order to enhance your services to patients that are coming in? So, you know, if, as you're looking at service expansion, are you also looking at the quality of communication about the services that are offered and how that's been going and how that can be enhanced in the future?
Yes, and I would, I would put that in a slightly different bucket than diversion. Diversion typically, when we use that term, is referring to the patient being redirected by EMS before they even arrive at the hospital. So those aren't individuals that are at the hospital. But I think the scenario that you're describing are when someone can be in our emergency department, or to be honest, they could be an inpatient as well. And as part of their diagnostic workup, because again, we are a community hospital, so there are certain tertiary and quaternary services that not just us, but no other community hospital would offer. And so there are times when we have to initiate a transfer of a patient to a different facility that is able to offer a higher level or a different level of care than what we need. So for example, if someone came in and based on their initial workup, let's say that it looks like they're going to imminently need some type of emergency cardiac surgery. We do not do cardiac surgery. And so that there would be a physician-to-physician communication with an appropriate transferring hospital to hand off that person's care, and then we make arrangements for transportation to get them to that accepting facility. Those situations really happen on an emergent basis, so there's no set way to kind of broadly communicate because it's going to be so case-specific of you need to have this test emergently or you need to have this type of surgery emergently, and it's something we can't offer. So what typically happens in those situations is that the, the provider, which might be in many cases, an emergency room provider, or it might be one of our hospitalists or another specialist, are making those clinical decisions and communicating in real time with the patient's family compared to a broader type of communication because it's so very specific to that particular finding of why that patient needs to be transferred to a different facility. It happens very quickly, too. Yes.
It was very quick.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Oh, no, thank you, thank you. I just, you kind of jump back to diversion again. No, again, I thank you for explaining that because I think it was like heart attack number two. And actually, literally, same thing, didn't know exactly what the term was, but they determined, had to keep going because, i.e., I guess, the heart, they say couldn't provide the pop because the heart monitor, now knowing. And the reason why I mentioned that, I'm glad that you brought it up because maybe a lot of folks not aware of that. That's the aspect of it, and I hope that when this task force does happen, they do take that into consideration, as that being one of the things that could, you know, the reason why you have a lot of the packed hospitals that we do have, so, you know. But I thank you for that because I did not know that was the actual thing. I just know that one case where they said, we had to keep going because we couldn't take you here. So I did not know there was a name. I think you're putting the name on that for me.
No, you're very welcome. And that's what we were describing, and it goes back to Davion's comments at the beginning of the meeting, that the county executive office has just recently done a very comprehensive study with consultants, and they're looking at where there are gaps in care. Now, I do want to say that in any county, you, you, you wouldn't want total duplication of services because services would be underutilized and you introduce cost and waste. At the same time, though, you want the appropriate penetration of. At the same time, though, you want the appropriate penetration of comprehensive services geographically across the county, so that people can receive the care that they need. And in those urgent situations, you know, that's why, I know there were some questions earlier, but that's why we rely on, you know, sometimes it can be, we can safely transport somebody by ground, meaning by an ambulance. And there are other times where they're urgent, the need is so urgent, or the care is so complex, that they need even in that transport process, that we resort to, you know, a mail-in-state helicopter transfer process.
You so much, thank you.
As we are about to wrap up, I just want to reemphasize our interest in trying to retain medical practitioners in the city of Greenbelt. We do have very attractive space here, and we're kind of focusing in really sharply, you know, on economic and community development a little bit more. So I think through Mr. Samron and our Economic Development Manager, Kevin Simpson, if we can come up with, I don't know, incentives or some things that we could do, working with you. I've talked to just some of my own physicians, and one of them was telling me that there has been a lot of communication from other systems urging, you know, medical practices to move to Largo. So we don't want that. We want to keep the medical providers here. If there's some way we can actually encourage group practices to locate, to find a home here, and to help out, just like we help other entrepreneurs, to help medical practitioners find a home in Greenbelt. We'd like to explore that possibility.
Yeah, so we would definitely be interested in further exploring that. You know, I think the current environment, healthcare environment, is that in Prince George's County particularly, when you look at our community-based primary care and specialist physicians, we have an aging physician population, and even those that aren't aging, it's more and more difficult, with all of the insurance regulations and everything else that they have to deal with, to be an independent physician, similar to, I started tonight's conversation with talking about doctors' challenges with remaining an independent hospital. Those same challenges face physicians in the community as well. At Luminous Health, we are, as part of, part response in working with the county, we are looking at specialty by specialty, where some of those gaps are. And the county has it broken down into the different geographic regions. So we're looking specifically at North County, which Largo is not part of North County. So we are looking specifically at that. And we do, you know, our strategy, I would say, going forward is multi-fold, but it includes both, which we have done already, in some cases, acquisition, when it's mutually beneficial, of practices that are, where it's mutually beneficial for us to take on a practice, as well as recruitment of new physicians and bringing them into the community. So we look at both venues as ways to expand our footprint. And we would, maybe Davion is the best connection with, to that, and our Luminous Health Clinical Enterprise colleagues to have some more specific conversations around what some of those opportunities might look like.
Yeah, we appreciate that, and we know that some of our office space, you know, may, some assistants somehow are creatively looking at ways to build outs. Infrastructure, maybe, maybe there's some way we can think of something that would be mutually beneficial. Yes, Ms. Pompey, please.
Sorry, excuse me. To that point, when you're talking about gaps in care, one of the definite gaps in care we have does have to do with women's health, and that's the fact that there are no birth centers or midwifery centers here in Prince George's County. And even regionally, as I'm sure you know, there are really no birthing centers or midwifery centers. We used a birthing center in Virginia, because there just weren't any options here. And I think that that is an option that is appealing to a lot of this generation of women. It's just a different model of giving birth and different model of care. So I hope that you will consider those services as you're thinking about women's health. And then the other question I had was about the Behavioral Health Pavilion. What youth services do you guys offer? You mentioned that you're hoping to offer residential beds for youth, but are you currently offering any other inpatient or outpatient services for youth behavioral and mental health?
Yes, I'll try to quickly address both of those questions. On the maternal side, there are actually, you're correct, there are no freestanding birthing centers in the state of Maryland. Part of that is due to the liability environment and the increasing risk of the population that are having babies and tend to be sometimes slightly older, but not old. And perhaps with other coexisting conditions. So at this point, we don't believe, I think there's a reason why there are no birthing centers in Maryland. We don't believe that it's feasible to open a freestanding birthing center. However, we do plan to incorporate midwives into our practice in the hospital. And part of our design, we didn't get into the design of the OB rooms, but part of our design is also to, really, we have this opportunity with a new building to design our rooms to kind of mimic, obviously it's not a home environment, but to mimic some of those things that women appreciate in a home environment, such as even a birthing pool, is one example. We also are very much supporting doulas in our maternal practices, and that's something that we will really model in our design on when we bring our services to our land of campus as well.
That's really exciting.
Yes, yes. And as far as the behavioral health and children, with the exception of our inpatient unit, which is adult-only, 18 and up, all of our other services are open and available for children. Our urgent care, I believe, sees children as young as four years old, if I'm not mistaken. And we can see those kids through that ongoing ambulatory continuum of care as well. So it's just the inpatient unit that is an adult-only unit, but all of our other services are available to youth.
Thank you so much.
Okay, it's about nine o'clock right now. I don't see any questions online. I do see there's a question here in the room. Sir, would you like to go to the microphone, please?
Thank you, the Orleans still. I just hope we'll clarify something. I think I should know the answer, and I, but it was kind of left up in the air. Understanding the distinction between a community hospital and a trauma hospital, you may that clear. Doctors is not a trauma hospital. You indicated that if someone arrived presumably by ambulance, but maybe in the backseat of a car with a gunshot, there would gunshot, there would be consultation between doctors, physicians, and a physician, say, in Largo, and facilitation transportation would be arranged. But, and similarly, I was surprised to hear that doctors is not considered a cardiac arrest hospital. But if someone arrived with a heart attack, similarly, facilitation transportation would be arranged. But in the meantime, or presumably, these patients would be stabilized. They're not going to be left in, I, I'm, thank you for.
Absolutely, and I do want to clarify, on a cardiac, we do not offer cardiac surgery. However, we do treat many people who have a heart attack. Not everyone who has a heart attack requires immediate, if any, cardiac surgery. So in any case, we are required by law, and it's what we do. Anyone who comes to our emergency department, we will stabilize, treat, and then get them to the right level of care. That is the, kind of the standard protocol of our emergency department. So even if it is something that we, a service that we don't offer, we will do everything that we can to stabilize and then get them transferred to the appropriate level of care.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. One more question. So back to the communication with emergency services. You know, we do have a volunteer fire company here in Greenbelt, Engine Company 35. There's volunteer firefighters in Berwyn Heights, and there's a building, Landover Hills, or West Landover Hills is right across the street. So do you, the communication with those volunteer firefighters, you know, you have the career firefighters that are actually in these locations 24 hours a day for additional coverage. Is there anything that the city can do to enhance the relationship or the communication between the volunteer firefighters? Or is that something that's a need at all?
I think, so the short answer is yes. You know, we want to make sure we have direct communication with our public safety leaders, be they police officers, sheriffs, career firefighters, volunteer firefighters, and understand the volunteer firefighter EMS system. Each station has a chief, et cetera. I love to work with you on making sure that we have their contact information, building a relationship with the chiefs of the different firehouses. I think that's very important, especially because we understand that the needs and concerns of the career firefighters versus volunteer firefighters can be different. And we want to make sure that just as we communicate with Chief Green in Largo, that we communicate with our individual fire chiefs, as well as the leadership of the fire commission. So that's absolutely welcome. Thank you for bringing that up.
Chief Rain.
Make that introduction.
Thank you.
Well, you know, really appreciate the conversation this evening. It's very enlightening, you know, as we move forward with the plans there at Doctor's Hospital, and just, you know, keeping those lines of communication open. We're here for you, and conversation about coming into the city, you know, we can, we can talk about that.
Absolutely. That involves several other people in addition to me. So we should keep those lines of communication open as well, though. I honestly don't know all the details right now to be able to give a further answer on that particular issue.
Police Department, you know, be there in five minutes if something happens. I'm just saying.
And Mayor and City Council and others that joined tonight, just want to end with just thanking you for your time tonight, thanking you for your ongoing partnership, and we really do value this partnership and the relationship with the city of Greenbelt, so thank you.
Thank you so much. We've got a little additional business to take care of, so unless, you know, if you want to stick around.
Thank you all.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, sincerely, thank you.
And happy Thanksgiving. Yes, happy Thanksgiving.
Enjoy.
Just a few.
Let's see, couple of information items. Mr. Gordon, you had a couple links?
Yeah, no, real quick, for those who aren't aware, obviously, the Prince George's County Municipal Association did select their official priorities to go forward to the actual, and the mayor's input, Mayor Jordan obviously, did your input on it as well. So those who aren't aware, it's increased on water management funding, often ability for municipalities within the county to have its own authority and greater control over development within their borders, tax differential concerns, and access to fair treatment of municipalities taxpayers, reforms to juvenile justice laws, and opposition to using state funding for the MAGLA. So those are the ones that will be going forward that were put together by, obviously, the municipal legislative committee and the actual county mayors. And also, too, for those who don't know, on December 7th, we do have our legislative reception for the county as well. So those, that is coming up. And also, if you do notice, I do, for people who do not know today, is transgender Day of Remembrance. For those, we do have a strong transgender population here in this city. And so what that does is recognize those who lost their lives to substance violence because of folks being who they are. So just wanted to let folks know that is what this is here for today. Just recognizing those folks, those Greenbelters, who unfortunately, thankful that's happening with our borders, but you have those at our borders who do live in fear because who they are. They are threatened by violence and substance murder.
Hey, the date on the legislative reception, that's going to be out there in Upper Marlboro? At the Showplace Arena?
Yep.
And that's on the 7th?
Yep, 7th.
There's an email that just came in today, I think.
Yeah, I think it just, yeah.
Yeah, I just saw that. So I don't know how many of us, but let's register. I want to be there. Sometimes I think we will assist financially a little bit. I saw some levels of sponsorship, and I, we're not going to go big with that, but we could kick in a hundred dollars maybe to help the cause, I suppose.
Done a table before or something?
It depends on the format, not a table. I think we did an ad. I think we did an ad in the journal.
Did something, I know, but we should see if we want to do an ad maybe again. But I have something, too.
Yeah, okay, Ms. Pope.
Oh, I just have something for it. There is a green and white e-bike or scooter. When you go past, when you go down Lake Crest Drive, past the tennis courts on the right, in that little open grassy area, and it's been there like for three weeks. I was hoping that they would pick it up, like I think, you know, but it's still there. So I don't know if we can remove it, or, they're very heavy. So I don't know if we can contact the owner of these, because it looks like one of those rental things, you know.
Sounds like a Lime bike.
So that would be, it's just.
Pick it up.
Yeah, thank you so much. Oh, and the clock's not working up there.
Yeah, the clock, let's, I'll reach up there, and since nobody else can.
Oh, excuse me. It's cold.
Hey, two things, you know, we've been, the city manager's been working on arranging a facilitator for our retreat. That date is coming up very, very fast, so I think there's a possibility that we may need to look at either the 9th or the 16th. My preference would be the 9th. That would be a Saturday as well. A little bit sooner than that, on the 29th, we have a work session where we'll be focusing in on animal services. I won't be able to physically be here, but I'll be online. I may have, Mayor Protem may actually chair that. But I'd like to actually bifurcate that work session, because, well, and I think we need to talk a little bit about council rules, which, you know, we update those at the beginning of each term, and also talk about our committee assignments. So I was talking to Mr. Samron, and I'm proposing that we split that work session and cover two topics. So I just wanted to give everybody's a heads up, or see if there's any objections.
Although I think discussing rules maybe could be part of the retreat as well.
I think what the practice has been is, you know, in a work session, you know, you kick things around, ultimately, you have to vote on them.
Which we can't do at a work session anyway, so we could still discuss that as a.
Session ahead of time, then it comes to a council meeting.
Right, I guess. I, I'm not sure. It depends on how long we think that conversation is going to be, and whether that fits in with retreat discussions.
Okay, well, let's, you know, kick around in the work session and see where we are. Okay, and I did circulate a copy of the last approved rules to Danielle and Jenny, along with a link. There's a training module that the Institute for Governmental Affairs over at University of Maryland put together on the open meeting. And I think I'll circulate that same email with those two documents to everybody. I plan to, you know, go through the open meeting act training, and it's just a good thing to do on a regular basis. Mr. Samron, any news for the good of the order?
I'd sure would like to provide some background on the retreat. We were looking to get a facilitator, and we reached out to several consultants, and the price tag on those had been a bit high. One was $12,500, another was $43,000. That's the latest one I sent you.
Yeah.
So we're looking at what our best options are. We have discussed possibility of doing a self-facilitated retreat with some guidance around particular topic items. One that the Mayor Protem suggested was the standing rules for council. Others have been around our MBOs, particularly for the two incoming council members. They were not seated yet when we discussed MBOs and other operational activities. We're in an interesting time, and during the onboarding process, that is, that we are in the second quarter of the fiscal year, and so our budget is almost halfway through. We're halfway through the fiscal year with the MBO and performance. And so to do goal-setting as our initial meeting is challenging, but we could do some team-building in other council business. So I want to give that context to you, that the date, the 2nd is fast approaching. It's not that we haven't done any workaround, that it's hiring a facilitator. Unless we want to pay the $12,000 or the $43,000, give me the green light, we'll make it happen. But we're trying to find the most economical way to meet the needs of council and its planning. So, so just some background on that.
That's crazy.
Yeah, and I guess the other topic is with this, the legislative meeting with our district. Yeah, and I guess the other topic is with this, the legislative meeting with our District 22 Senator and delegates, that's also coming up very, very fast on the 28th, so.
Yes, and we'll have.
Talked about that on the agenda on the 27th a little bit. And it's slated to start at 5, 5:30?
5:30, I understand, Mayor, that you had some conversation with folks, other municipalities about changing the time?
Just in, in moving it back a little bit to 6 o'clock or 6:30. It's a couple.
November 28th.
Got it here, 5:30 we said?
That's the time it's currently scheduled for, yes.
And it's too early, you guys say?
It's too early, Mayor, don't.
So the, the, it's been an interesting process on how we're coordinating with the Senator's Office for the entire district to have this meeting through, via the city managers. There are inputs that we haven't quite gathered from other municipalities, so there's obviously some challenges for some elected officials. We just haven't been, haven't had a good process of collecting that, those inputs and that feedback. So we've, we've gone with what the Senator's Office has suggested as a timeframe and for me, the 5:30 PM is a common start time versus a 7:30 for us. Also, the other thing that the other municipalities are facing, while we take pride in our four-hour meetings, the other municipalities don't.
That was good.
Or three and a half, but all that to say is that we are no strangers to, to, to long, to long meetings and we don't shy away from a robust conversation. So, you know, I, I take that as a, as a positive and not in any way a negative thing. And so the, the timing for others, they're much more sensitive to the timing than, than perhaps we are. That's all a positive on our end, we have to be sensitive to where others are in their process.
Well, I definitely appreciate that. On the other hand, you know, we, we have, having 10 or 15 minutes to present our legislative priorities and to discuss some of the, the needs of our residents is just not enough. So somehow we, we need to find a way to, to have FaceTime with our delegation aside from this because I, I just don't see how it's going to work unless it's going to be a four-hour meeting.
Right, and one of the things that we've come up with is a share or joint priorities list and they add on what, on what Mr. Gordon just announced as shared priorities at the PG level. We've came up with seven legislative priorities that we, that all the municipalities have in common. So juvenile justice, for example, that's something that we, we all agreed on that it's, it's a sensitive topic for our community and what's, what's hap, the current legal framework is not working. So we need to push that. We don't know what that solution looks like, but we need to push that. We need to try different things around juvenile justice reform. There are a few, affordable housing is one that we all agreed that the, all of our, our councils are concerned about. So we, we add on Meister's List. I understand that the mayors also met to discuss their legislative priorities and they come up with their own priorities.
It's not, somehow there was an email that went out about that. We, the mayors, we had a off the cuff kind of discussion when there was a deadline to get the information to MML. And unfortunately, it was before several councils met, so it was not meant to be prioritized list, what it was, it was more like a brain dump collectively. So we had a bunch of things that we listed and that was only to, to try and get ahead of the deadline.
I'm sorry that if I, that I misrepresented that. I, I got an email with two attachments that said, one was a summary, et cetera. So all seven municipalities received those two documents and we just sort of took that as a record of that conversation that was held.
Mayor Protem.
Yeah, that just reminded me because I was pulling up the calendar, that same evening as the legislative dinner is a District Four Community Forum on Rising Crime that Ingrid Watson is holding at the Bowie State University. So since obviously many of us will be at the legislative dinner, that might be something to make sure to pass along to the chief, that it could be useful for, for somebody from the police department to attend that, that forum. And I think that was in, that was in one of her newsletters. So they may already be aware of it, but I just, I noticed it because it's overlapping on my calendar on the 28th.
Should I get that? Okay, well, it's about 9:30 right now, so in order to avoid a four-hour meeting. Can we go ahead and hold?
So far.
Thank you, everybody. It's only two hours.
I heard that. I'm paying attention to you.